I would know how to start tomorrow.
We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today's date is May the 6th, 2024, and this is the Telsa City Common Council. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody please stand and remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in heart.
Thank you all. Maybe see. Before we adopt the agenda, I do have one addition. Under New Business, Item B, we have Charlie Baumeister here with the Animal Welfare Board. He's got some information he'd like to share with us that that board's been working on and just inform us. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to have just a brief discussion about the solid waste management district.
What do you want to pick up?
I could also cover that under my ward report if you would.
If you just want to cover your report, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. If there's no other additions or changes, I intend a motion to approve the agenda with that one addition.
So moved.
One, a motion made by Phillip. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands approved. Next item is Presentation of Minutes for Approval. These are from your April 1st meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes as presented?
Motion to adopt.
Motion made by Gerald. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes stand approved. Next item is Comments of Citizens. If there are any citizens that'd like to make any comments to the Telsa City Common Council, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the minutes, please.
I'll make this quick. Ron Ford, 12th Street, Telsa City. I really wanted to comment a lot of officer was here, but number one, I know the vandalism and everything too well in this town. And I was just wondering, you know, you're talking about the door jams and all, which is great, you know, automatic. But if somebody puts a can in front of it, and I can guarantee it's going to happen, soon as they find out that they automatically locked, they're going to be putting limbs, boards, whatever. I mean, is the camera going to be set where you can see if somebody does that? And if the door does not close, will it notify you guys that, you know, it's not closed? Will it notify the police that it's not closed? Is it possible that we can have the police, if it locks automatically at 1:00, is it possible that we can have the police look at it at 1:15? You know, I mean, make it a nightly routine, you know, to inspect, make sure the doors are automatically locked?
The cameras are actually on display in dispatch, so the dispatcher's actually able to look and see just some setting there if the doors are locked.
Oh, good, good. You said I learned something every time.
Yeah. You, if you ever go down to dispatch, if you ever go to dispatch, a lot of those cameras are all up on the school, everything. They have, they are like watchdogs. They've got it all.
I didn't know that either, Ron, so you and I both learned about that.
All right.
They've got televisions that are like 60, 70 inch. They're huge TVs.
Well, I just know how they little me and everything. I'm not warning him. I'd love to see if he would make it a nightly routine.
Sure. All right. Any other comments of citizens?
Phillip Simpson, 631 10th. You want me to go down there?
No.
I was just wondering for employees what the paternity leave is for city employees.
It's in our Personnel Policy Handbook. You should have a copy of that.
That's where it would be.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Because I know companies are, have started to increase that a lot, so I was thinking maybe the city could look at that.
And Connie and I have had discussions about our, I'm glad, and it's a good thing you brought that up, Phillip. Connie and I are going to be working on the Personnel Policy Handbook, and that's something the Board of Works actually approves. And we're looking to make some changes to that, even for like new hires. You don't get a vacation until you've worked here a whole year. And some places, a lot of employers now are, maybe after a month or two, you get that week vacation, because some people, when you hire them, they already have a vacation planned. Well, how can they take off work? It really creates a, and that's just one thing we've talked about. We, Connie's got a list, I've got a list, and we've got a lot going on, but we'll get to it. We work with Erwin Wagner and Shealy. Those names may be mixed around somehow, but those names are all in that.
That's right.
Did I get it right this time?
Yep, I got it right this time.
Well, good. They handle our Personnel Policy Handbook along with any of our job descriptions. And we're actually working on a couple of job descriptions, revising those as well. So it's just to get it done.
To have the time.
Because the last time it was, we've had some amendments or additions to it. I think
2018.
18 was, oh, right, right when I started. Was when it was last. So it's, it's important to look at that every, you know, five years or so, and we're pretty much a little over that, so it's time. So if you have any suggestions once you review it, or if anybody on the council reviews it, let Connie or myself know. We'd be glad to take into consideration and look at what other communities are doing or run it by them and see if it's something we can or can't do.
Yes.
So, any other comments?
No, that's perfect.
It's a great, great suggestion. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to committee and board reports. I'm going to change it up a little bit. I know Larry's ready to just like pounce over there, but I'm going to start with on this side and work away that way. So you get to go last this time.
This one?
Yeah. We haven't done that for a while. So we're going to start first with Gerald Jaikley. He's Councilman-at-Large. And remember that you can go ahead and announce your partners in pride in a report if you'd like.
Okay. My partners in pride is Ohio Valley towing the old A&amp;G property. They've made tremendous cleanup there and going to do more is what Mike told me. I mean, they're painting the building now.
Looks great.
Looks good. They put a lot of time and effort into that, so.
They cleared a lot of those low hanging trees that were causing those problems out on 13th Street last year. The Telsa Electric helped us with.
So they're very deserving of that.
They are.
In Forrest Ward Report, a couple of citizens approached me about some potholes and low spots and curbs, and I passed that on to our street commissioner and the creek slide on 16th and Petzalazi. So the, he's aware of that.
Yeah. Midwestern's got that as top priority to address that one, because they're going through the whole creek and evaluating it and telling us, you know, what we should and shouldn't do and can and can't do and how to, a maintenance plan overall, too.
Yeah. Forrest, I'd like to just brag a little. The car show yesterday, and we had a very, very good day. And the kids up here, there was a lot of kids up here growing, child walk. Citizens Police Academy was cooking chicken. I mean, we had it busy downtown. So worked out good.
It was a great time. Weather was awesome.
Weather was great.
Cars were beautiful. A lot of mine sitting down there. I couldn't imagine what all those cars cost. Millions.
These Partners in Pride signs, do we get these?
We do. Doty's got those ordered, so when they come in, I'll have her call or email you and just stop by and pick it up and deliver it to the recipient.
Will that be for the next month then, or this month?
This month. So you'll need one this, if you haven't got one with you today, you just let me know and we'll, we'll add it to the minutes later if you don't have one.
It's good for, we'll leave, you should leave it up for a month and then we move it.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We leave it up for a month. That's correct. The sign stays up.
Our June meeting, we'll announce the June. They'll announce the June.
And then we'll move it.
Yeah, then you move it to next. They don't keep the sign. But it's important to knock on their door and make contact with them, make sure they're willing to accept it. Some are humbled and very thankful, but they don't, they don't want the recognition. And that's okay. I mean, their yard, their choice. So Gerald, did you have anything else in your report?
No.
Mike?
I'd show was from about six or seven applicable nice homes, beautifully landscaped. Mike and Janice Farmer at 1648 20th Street.
Okay.
And they, I spoke to him and he was okay. Well, he's doing some work on one side of it, but I just took the picture of the best part.
Okay.
He smiled at that.
Did you say Farmer with the last name?
Yes, Mike and Janice Farmer.
Okay.
1648 20th Street.
Okay.
It's kind of out of the way. I had to search for it.
Yeah.
And then also Parks and Rec Director Stephen Parker has pointed out to me the need for something to be done in Zirker Beddinger Park. It's, it's unsafe, I would say, reliable. He can give us some options. He volunteered to stay after and give us some options on what we can do. I was glad to hear you say how nice it, the park we have now developed into something that's, we're proud of. And this is something that needs attention for the kids that live there in the trailer courts and there's several apartment complexes there. I'm sure they one time used it, but now it's disrepair. So I'd like to have Steve give us some pointers, some options.
I had a meeting. Phil was there, Mayor was there. Maurice Carver now showed up, the old Parks and Rec Director. Zach Parks, Parks and Rec Board, and what else was there? Mayor.
Am I right? There was. And I can't remember, but it's okay. We think of it, I'll let you know.
Oh, I guess Bill Gebhardt.
Oh, John Gebhardt.
John.
John Gebhardt.
Yes. We just got a room in the park four, the good part of the park, salvage, up into the corner, about bathrooms and shelters. We actually have some old playground equipment sitting at the shop right now that could be restored. I think Raymond had planned to put it at the swimming pool. We could use that possibly. There's options of possibly selling off that for redevelopment. We could take out the back equipment in a way a few years, hopefully come into some money and redevelop park. I would just like to see the playground equipment come over, so far back out. I've actually been sitting there on weekends and there's a bus that's out there in the corner and watching family kids actually use the park in nice days. It's not a lot. I think I've seen three alone. That's what I've gotten so far.
Well, those are definitely awesome options that we need to take into consideration and then, and as we start on our budget in the next two months, month and a half, that might be something we need to consider is how much we can put into it, what we want to put into it. And maybe by then you might have some costs, what it would take to either move it or buy some new or, or other options from the Parks Board. Might, I'm sure they'd have some recommendations. Yeah, it's very important. I mean, we went down and looked at it and he's not wrong. That playground equipment is almost like it's in the middle of a field. And it is, in essence, but I think moving it closer by restrooms would be better in case parents are there, they can kind of watch their kids a little better than being that far away. Because it's pretty, two and a half, 250 feet away at least, probably, I'm guessing.
Now, that's still the flag football field, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we've got to talk to the school, or well, not the school necessarily, but the program who does the flag football about, is that the best spot, or is there other spots they would prefer? Or is that just a spot they've forgiven that they've been using, you know?
Well, Rick Wilgus and I started that, you know, about 12 years ago. Started to back up with the youth league.
Yeah.
And that was the only spot we basically had. We were down at the swamp for a while, the old, the practice field for the, for the high school. And then we kind of got kicked out of that and was, and that Zirker Beddinger is about all the only place we could go.
Sure.
Because they had the soccer field starting up over here, which they didn't have as many soccer players back then, but I mean, look at it now. I mean, it's.
Yeah, it's grown.
So, yeah, that's, that's kind of how we got kicked down to Zirker Beddinger.
These are all options, I think. And if you guys get a chance, go down there, take a look at it, get your thoughts and ideas, and talk to Stephen and the Parks Board.
That was something with the, the school. I, I can't remember if they just didn't want a bunch of people driving down there and parking. At the time, of course, we didn't have any facilities down there. This was before they had the bathrooms and everything. So, I mean, that, you're talking 12, 13 years ago. And, and so Rick and I decided that, I mean, if we're going to get a flag football program, we got to go someplace where we've got an open field, basically. And that's when we had Donnie Freilich make the goalposts and everything. And so it kind of evolved like that. But it'd been nice if we could have, we really wanted, we really wanted the field where the soccer field's at. And we could.
Boyden Park.
Yeah. That's what we really wanted to have to start out with. But, because Zirker worked good, too. I mean, they, you had two games going at the same time and it was, you know.
What else about Joe Schaefer Park, moving them up there on the other side?
You could probably, yeah, you could probably put two fields there.
It's all worth looking into and just measuring it out and see what works.
I drive out both places. I'll check too.
It's all, we're looking for input. You know, nothing's final, nothing's decided. Yeah. We need to keep the school involved and we need good communication.
There's nothing there that we need to address right now to eliminate for safety's sake.
That's the question I was going to ask.
Good.
For safety.
I mean, if only three kids came in, in the four or five days you were watching, were they near or on the equipment?
They took out one of the barriers, put it up on climbers, little chain link climbers. That was one of them. No, that was two kids, sorry. What kid rode his bike through the park and that's what that resulted in. It wasn't much.
Well, if you feel, and I, I can't speak for this entire council or even the entire Board of Works, if you feel there's equipment that's unsafe, remove it. I don't think he needs our blessing to get it removed if it's something that's going to cause it, or at least rope it off or, or make it where it's not usable, absolutely, for, you know, safety.
Yeah, right. I mean.
If I miss something, let me know. But you see, you hear, now horseshoe pits most definitely, they're calling over the back.
Yeah, horseshoe pits aren't as popular as they once were 20 plus years ago.
I don't even think the ones down at Aggerton Parker is.
No, they're gone. They're gone. They've been gone for two years, Larry.
No, they have not. It's easier to throw a cornhole back.
I'm really sure it's been, it's been at least a year and a half. I think two years.
Shoulder it's easier.
All right. Mike, anything else to report?
No, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ward three, Mr. Phillip Simpson.
Well, I was going to report about that meeting, but they did a great job.
Stole your thunder.
Yeah. I don't have Partners in Pride yet.
Okay.
It's all I've got.
When you get it, just email Doty or I or Connie and let us know and we'll get you that sign, too. They're working on them.
Is that going to be in the paper?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll send a notice to the paper and see if they want to put it in or, you know, if they don't, just.
Yeah.
They have in the past.
They have in the past. I'd like to get pictures of who you select. If you get it, just text it to me or email it to me. And then we'll get something together that we can send to the Prairie County News, and we'll post on our Facebook page, too, and we, and promote it.
Yeah.
And hope we get some positive feedback. Phillip, did you have anything else? I'm sorry. All right. Ward two, Mr. Brian Steen.
Okay, I, your partners in pride, I was cruising around last, over the last weekend, looking at different houses and stuff. I haven't approached the individuals yet. But I had two and it was kind of, I had to flip a coin. So I picked Donald and Sandra Poole at 802 23rd Street.
802 23rd?
Yep. And I'm, I don't know if I'm, if I'm doing this just kind of correctly or what, but I go with the way everything is either manicured or if I see them out there working. And when you, and I, I really am impressed with, in my area, with the elderly people.
Yeah.
That are out there in their 70s and 80s, I mean, hoofing it and, and mowing and trimming. And I mean, I hope to be doing that someday, you know.
That's not necessarily old.
Well, I know. I know, Mike. Excuse me, there's some 90 year olds, too. But I just think it's just great that they get out and do that. And, you know, some people I hire there has done and everything, but the, the people I noticed were, were doing their own work. So I'll get and.
Donald and.
Donald and Sandra Poole, 802 23rd Street.
Okay.
And I will get with them after we get the sign and everything. I'll ask them first of all, talk to them and see. Do you want to go with me when we present? Do you want to go with me?
Nah, you can. I can go with you. I'll just.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to go to each one?
No, I don't, I don't necessarily have to. You know, when I've dealt, when I was on council on Dunham, I've even put in people who had no landscaping, just a nice, clean yard with grass, you know, trimmed and just kept up. They didn't spend any money on flowers, no.
I even got a picture. I'll send that.
There you go. No, no money on landscaping stones. It was just clean and taken care of. Nothing elaborate. And you don't have to have a lot of money to keep your yard clean.
Right.
You just don't.
Right. I also went to the LEPC meeting, 22nd of April. Your dad chairs that.
Yeah.
And it was very interesting. I, I'm coming in kind of, coming in kind of cold, but they gave me this Sarah Title III materials book. If any of you guys want to look at this sometime, just give me a holler or tonight or whatever and take it with you. But very interesting. I think I'm going to, I'm really enjoy that. And basically, they just covered their, what their expenditures were and their, their plans for 2025 and all that. So it was very interesting. And then basically, I went by Joe Schaefer and I thought it was looking, coming right along, you know? So, I mean, I know we've had, the weather's going to be kind of really nasty this week as far as getting anything done. So.
Yeah. Rainy week.
And I will check with, with Rick. I will check with Rick Wilgus on the flag football program to see if his committee, what they want to do with that, too. I wrote it down, make sure.
Well, I think it's important to have a lot of input before making any decisions.
Yeah, I agree too. Okay, I'm good.
Well, thank you, Brian. And we save Larry for last.
I don't have any reports. No. You wish. Since we're on Partners in Pride, I'll just go ahead and take care of that now. I had, came up with a list of probably eight or 10 potential homes. And the home I picked was Jennifer Matthew Williams. They live at 68 Luzern Lane. And they've, Jennifer teaches in our system and Matthew is, you know, principal, I believe, at Springs Valley. So they just recently moved to our community, I think, less than two years ago, something like that. So they completely relandscape the home that they purchased and done a great job. And they're very happy to accept the award. I promised them a sign this week, Mayor.
I've got one. You made a promise. I got one in the office.
Well, I was.
You just get, it's your word one. You get the first one. Is that what you mean?
Okay. I, I don't care as long as I, they were excited.
Yeah, cool.
Let's not make any more promises.
Rest of my report, I, I did want to report that I was able to participate along with the mayor and Connie and Chris Hammick, the Prairie County Auditor on the We the Youth Program on April the 24th, where we had 20 freshman students meet with us and discuss about our positions in government. And I thought it was a, an interesting session and well worth doing and participating in. And hopefully the kids got as much out of it as, as, as I did. Also mentioned that I did stop by to, for Janet Damons' celebration today to congratulate her for a half a century of work for the Telsa City Water Department. I think they were supposed to, I was notified by Habitat for Humanity that they were going to try to move in the house that's going at 538 10th Street. That's the house that's being constructed by Perry Central Schools. They're going to put it on trailers and they were attempting, weather permitting, and I don't know whether through a wrench in it, but they were going to bring the, move the two trailers in today. And then tomorrow, they'll have a crane to actually set the house on the basement that's been built up there. But weather may have delayed that. I, I don't know.
That's a, that's a pretty steep hill.
I have to see the drivers.
No, I haven't, I haven't either. And I drove by there several times today. And I, I haven't talked to Josh. I just got a, I got an email from him a couple of weeks ago. So I'm assuming the weather has delayed that stuff. Anyway, it should be soon. So that'll be a, a new house during completion up there. I wanted to mention, I mentioned about solid waste. I viewed the last two solid waste meetings and I'm concerned, I just want to express my concerns because I know Mayor and Mike, you're on that board. But some things that were discussed, mentioned, particularly at the last meeting. The first thing is that the district board was advised by their accountant that they only have two to three months operating money left. They've been operating off of reserves because they've never made a decision as far as charging the fee, sending out any bills or what they're going to do. So they've been operating off their reserves. They're drawing down the reserves and unless they get some income in, they're going to be out of money. And I think three months, maybe less than that. So how does that affect the city if they run out of money and shut the operations down? I assume we'll have to shut down our curbside recycling. We won't?
Nope.
Where will we go with the materials?
I'll work a deal with Spencer County and we'll transport to Spencer County if we have to.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that is a backup emergency plan in my head. There's no.
I think we need to be planning that because the solid waste board.
She, she said, sorry, let me just interject. The lady is, is in charge there said that Spencer County passed on dealing with us.
Well, I think they would take our, if we actually were to take our materials to them and just in essence drop them off, I think they'd be willing to accept them. But I'll, I'll have another discussion.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Well, hopefully we can get something worked out or the.
I won't, we'll figure it out.
The other thing, or other things that were discussed during the meeting was, they talked about discontinuing glass recycling and just having people throw that in their trash. So that increases the amount of trash that we're hauling to the landfill, plus that makes the trash heavier and, and because glass is pretty heavy material. I don't think that's right, but that was discussed. They didn't take any action on it, but it was discussed. The director informed them, and I assume they knew this already, but during the meeting that, who's full time voluntarily did not accept health insurance. And she's raising two grandchildren. But she did that to save the solid waste management district money. Now, I understand her reasons for doing that, but that's not right. If she's entitled to health insurance, she should be receiving health insurance. And I didn't hear anybody on that board express that.
Whether she wants it or needs it? I mean.
She has no health insurance, Mike.
No health insurance?
No health insurance.
But it is offered to her.
Offered to her and she willingly passed on it.
Yes, to save the solid waste district money.
She should not be under the pressure of saving the solid district, waste district money.
I would agree.
I feel like that.
I would agree.
I'm sorry. It's wrong. It's just wrong. They talked about closing the Telsa City office, which is out at the annex. And I think there's a part-time employee that works there, plus the director.
Yeah, I think so. I'm not for sure on that. I know Marcia.
Marcia passed away.
Worked there a lot, but she's passed away.
And they talked about possibly changing and are closing the Derby site. Because evidently it is an unmanned site. And I guess some recyclables are getting mixed in with trash and anyway, I'm not sure. But what was disappointing to me is all they talked about was cut, 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 reduce, reduce, reduce. There was no discussion about how can we improve this operation, increase recycling, decrease the amount of solid waste going in. And it's just frustrating. And I just wanted to share that with our two representatives on that committee. And I know you're two out of six or seven.
Yeah.
So. So.
We were told that like the plastic, if there's mixed, they just discard it. It automatically goes to trash.
Yeah.
And glass is, it doesn't pay, it doesn't pay to, it doesn't pay for itself is the reason that they wanna stop using that.
Oh, Mike, I understand that, but, but what the director explained is the recycled glass that we get, they store it up there and there's a larger recycling company that comes down and picks it up and hauls it away for us that, so we know that glass is being recycled. It's not being taken to a landfill somewhere. They don't charge us anything. Now, I realize there's a cost of doing business, but you know, you don't do government services to make money. It's not a profit-making enterprise. We do it to reduce the amount of waste that's going in our landfills. So, you know, we don't make money off the Sheriff's Department either when we arrest We don't make money off our Park and Recreation Department.
We don't make money off our pool. I mean, we make money, but not enough to cover the cost.
Oh, we don't. But it's a public service and that, it just.
And we have reduced our, there's nothing wrong with looking at ways to save money, reduce cost. I think that's responsible. Like the pool, for example, we decided to do away with the concession stand, but go to a vending option to save on labor. That makes sense, you know, but you're right. I, you bring up good points, valid points.
And while, while the amounts of glass may be small in comparison, which the comment was made, you know, it's the amount that putting glass in a landfill versus recycling a, as small as Prairie County is, it doesn't amount to anything. Well, yeah, if that attitude's taken by all 3,000 counties in the United States, you know, is that what we wanna do? Just throw our glass bottles out in the yard or something, along the roadside? I, it just, it bothers me, the direction and, and the things that are being discussed versus how can we improve the service for the county.
It was pretty much unanimous that it, they don't wanna put it on the tax, you know, put a private, or.
Property tax.
Property tax, yeah.
It's too late to do that this year anyhow.
Yeah.
Not this year, but next year.
Yeah.
We're talking about doing something now preemptive to next year, like, like what should've been done when it was popped on us in December. All this is gonna be hopefully decided by the next time cards come out.
Okay.
Are they gonna issue cards, Mike?
Not at, not at, at the last meeting we had, last week we had a meeting, I know you couldn't make it, but it was decided that they weren't sending cards out at that time, so I don't know yet. I can't say they are.
They haven't, they haven't made a decision.
I thought, I thought the last meeting, one person couldn't make it and then the rest of us.
They, they rescheduled it.
Rescheduled it?
It was last Thursday.
And I missed it. Boy.
It happens.
Yeah, I just stumbled across it, Mike, I was looking through some YouTube stuff and.
But it, there's a lot of improvements that should and needs to be made when related to solid waste. I do think we need to either in-house or professionally review all the services and the efficiency of how it's collected, important, and how it's billed equally. You know, it is totally unfair that every hotel room get a bill when nursing homes to go, only get one. So all those need to be addressed fairly. There's a lot of options that could be done, it's just what's the right one and what's the fair one?
Yeah. And, and I agree with you and I, I think, in my opinion, they've got, they've got a fee established, they don't have to take any action as far as any legal action to send those bills out. They're not changing the fee. They could send those bills out, put a due date on them and be done with it.
Even if they wanted to send, change the fee to reduce it or any fee change, it would have to be done through a public hearing.
Correct.
Which would take 30 days.
30 days notice and then implementation.
So you're looking at at least, we're gonna say August for anything would even, anybody get a bill? If that's what the, if that's the route that they go with or it's decided, that's an if, I'm not saying.
There'd be a lot of money going.
Yep.
Potentially.
As if it's changed, what if, can they just.
If they try to change.
But if they just sent out the bills with the current rate as, as adopted, they can do that tomorrow.
Yep.
Yeah. But they have to.
And they're not, and they're not raising taxes.
They'd have to go out to all.
They're keeping the same fee that people paid.
They'd have to go out to everyone, county and the cities, both.
Yes, yes.
To avoid litigation.
Yes. So anyway, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, any statements or comments from the city attorney or the clerk treasurer?
Very quick update, a couple of properties that, that we've known about for a long time, one over at Troy Park. There was discussion of a sale of some property the city owns to IMPA. Got an update from IMPA, ooh, Connie, a week, about a week and a half ago. Looks like that's going to move forward, there's still some moving pieces, there's a, a private landowner that's gonna be involved with IMPA in terms of any acquisition over there, but that is something that I anticipate happening maybe by the summertime. There's been some discussion about the parking lot at Riverpoint, which the city still owns and Riverpoint holds an exclusive easement. Been communicating with Riverpoint and they may be willing to accept that actually being conveyed to Riverpoint from the city, just so in essence, we can get it off our books. Some discussions ongoing, had some discussions with the environmental consultant about that. Very strong possibility that that could happen this summer as well, so just wanted to bring the board up to speed on that, that haven't forgotten about it, still working on it. One of the benefits to waiting a little while is the statute on publication of notices is gonna change and we'll be able to publish notices on our website effective July 1st. So as of right now, it costs a couple hundred bucks minimum to publish in the newspaper and we can publish on our website for free if we wait till July 1st.
Does that include ordinances too?
I'd have to check that, I do not know the answer to that question. I've been focusing specifically on real estate notices to, notices that have to be published.
Yeah, it saves us a lot of money.
I'll get you an answer, oh yeah, I'd love it.
It would save us a tremendous amount of money in making sure things are put in there when they need to be.
Any update on GE, Jeff?
The case has been settled. They're, from the city's perspective, ultimately, what's gonna happen is that, that in time, the city's gonna receive that property. GE is still involved with remediation. We don't wanna acquire it until they're done with remediation, so pursuant to the settlement agreement, that remediation will, will be ongoing. But we do have already in place an option agreement that we would exercise once the remediation is completed and IDM has signed off on that, so.
And we don't have to accept it, it's just an option.
Yeah, we, it's just an option agreement. If we decide at that point we don't want it, then we walk away.
So the agreement has been settled with all those property owners?
Yes, yep, yep.
They were settled before.
Completely done.
Great.
Yeah. We said, we don't have to accept it, it's just an option.
Yeah.
So if we decide we don't want it, we have to.
Yeah.
It's our choice.
I like to kind of categorize it as a slow-rolling settlement because, you know, the tangible stuff that the city's gonna see is down the road.
Do, do we know what remediation they plan?
Yes. It's to an extent, they will go in there and further do abatement on the property as far as the, under the ground, able to, there, there's a process where they can actually go in there and.
They heat it.
Heat it up and remove some of that contamination and then they will remove the buildings after that.
They will remove the buildings.
Buildings, yeah, the buildings.
As it stands right now, the buildings will be removed.
Right.
I've encouraged them to keep one building although, and that's the one back off Windy Creek. It's a steel-framed, metal-sided A-frame type two of them. If the city were to ever receive that, that would make a good indoor facility for any parks and rec, you know, pickleball or basketball or soccer or what, I don't know yet. Even if we may end up the property, but these are certainly, I like to leave that as an option.
Yeah, part of, part of the settlement, GE is going to pay a substantial amount of money for a consultant that we're gonna work with and look at.
For best use.
Options, best use options down the road.
That's still to come. My thoughts are, and this is getting the cart before the horse, but I would like to see is if we were to receive it, sell off the majority of it for development, for commercial development or, there cannot be housing.
Yeah, there can't be residential.
That's, that ship is never gonna sail. But I would be open to some type of a commercial development that would face 37 to continue to generate tax revenue for the city. And the back half could be maybe a soccer field or a ball field or what, we don't know yet, that's what we're gonna find out from this consultant.
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
There you go. You put 100 pickleball.
Well, that's, thank, thank you, Jeff and Mayor for working so hard on that because that's.
It was a lot of work.
That's been a.
I can't tell you.
Albatross.
I wish I could say it was fun.
I couldn't begin to tell you how many hours Jeff has spent and myself, I mean, I know, we were in Evansville on a Friday night at federal courthouse until 8 o'clock at least, 8:30, 9 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
On a Friday night, I mean, I can think of a lot of better things to do.
That was the ones you were on, I was there.
Oh yeah, you were there. And then they were selling them in the daytime. We spent four days in Evansville up there with mediation, just sitting in a courtroom going back and forth.
I gotta give a real kudos to the US magistrate, she, she grabbed the parties and said, said.
Good, good.
Sorry, toss my little wrapper there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any comments or statements from the clerk treasurer?
Not this evening, no.
Okay, all right. And just for Connie's minute-wise, when she wants, she wants a group Partners in Pride together, my Partners in Pride will be the Salt Room. I don't know if you know where the Salt Room is, it's there on Main Street. Used to be Shreve's Service Station, Chester Fried Chicken many, many years ago. And then it was the Detail Shop and then when Mr. Combs passed away, they purchased it and they've, they've done a really good job with it. They started, Mr. Combs originally put the Salt Room in it and they've expanded it now since he's, their family had sold it to the Martins and they have done an outstanding job on that.
Is it still part Detail Shop then?
It is, it's still part Detail Shop Salt Room. But if you get a chance, take a look at it, I would tell you, it is a world-class facility. I mean, it is beautiful inside. I mean, first class, 100%. I mean, even if you're not interested, just go in there and look at it, you'll go, wow, this is in Tell City? This is, this is nice. And it really helped our residents take advantage of it and use it and we, I wanna thank them for their investment because it looks great.
Yeah, they did a first-class job.
So, all right. That's all we have under the committee and order reports and Partners in Pride, there is no old business, so we'll move down to new business. Item A, additional appropriation resolution. Connie, do you wanna?
This additional appropriation is continued from your, from your last meeting. At that meeting, you had stated that you would appropriate, or it would come before you tonight to appropriate that additional 40,000 for park improvements that you use then on any of our parks, not just the Joe Schaefer Park where we do have a lot going on right now with the restrooms and the shelter house and that. I can, I guess I need to read this because it's a resolution, don't I?
You only have to read it by title at this point.
Okay, additional appropriation resolution 2024-11 is the resolution number.
Okay. Counsel, resolutions, we're calling one reading. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Larry, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any further discussion?
This money is AARP money?
Correct, I'm sorry, I don't think I said.
Yeah, you did.
I'm sorry, I apologize. It is out of the ARP money. Yes.
I wanna clarify that.
Okay.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
And I will pass this down for everyone's signature.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, we have another resolution now, is this the 20, this is the 2024-12?
12, correct. And this is a transfer within the general fund, within the Board of Works budget, and this is to transmit, form, transfer money into a line item for the mowing of the Tell City Depot. We have hired a company that is doing the mowing at Tell City Depot now and so I've estimated it at 1,500, but it, it just depends how many times they mow. If it gets dry, then we might not need that much, so.
That versus the Parks and Rec Department doing it.
Correct.
They've been doing it.
Correct.
Now, we, the city is in, fully in control now, just so you all, I don't know if you are aware of this, there was a change in the agreement with the lease with the CVB. City receives a larger rent payment, but are responsible for the mowing and so forth. But we also get all the revenue now from the event room. So if anybody wants to rent that event room down to Depot, they contact the mayor's office and Dody will take care of that for whoever wants to rent that. So we receive a lot of the funds that should cover all of our expenses related to the mowing, the electric bill and the water and wastewater and trash bills. We feel like it's gonna work out fine.
Take it a little bit, but.
Catch up, but it shouldn't be a, it might even go in the positive direction. If it does that, that's.
Yay.
A public facility going in the positive, that's amazing. So we'll hope that happens.
And there's, there's a, it does free up our small Parks Department to concentrate on the other parks because there's a lot of trimming and.
There's a lot of weeding in there.
Yeah.
And, and like we talked about, they, they're mowing big, wide-open spaces.
This is pretty much a push mower job.
Down there with a push mower. They just don't have it.
It is. So this is resolution 2024-12, resolution by the Tell City Common Council to make necessary transfers between classification within your general budget. So that is your first reading and only reading of it. Is there a motion to approve?
Make motion.
Motion made by Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Any further discussion?
And who, who was mowing this prior to this?
The Parks Department.
Okay.
Now, under the prior lease of CVB, we just contract, oh, we, Parks Department was doing it already, I'm sorry.
Parks Department was doing it and last year about halfway through the season, we switched and some, this company was mowing it then already. And so we just continued on with them this year.
Which was in the Board of Works budget?
Yeah.
Yes, but it all took place after the budget had been prepared for this year, so that's why we're having to transfer into this, this year.
I mean, there's no other options for another employee to mow that?
Not given the current staff we have now. We have, we're, as you're gonna find out when we talk about Greenwood Cemetery, we're, we're running with bare bones of what we need. We, we really are. We've, we've got a lot of responsibilities that we're trying to take on. So, good motions was made and seconded, we're still up for the discussion, is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Okay, then I'm gonna pass that around to be signed also.
Okay. We got both those, so that was your B resolution, sorry, I should've said that. Item C is Greenwood Cemetery. I'm gonna do my best to explain this, Connie, you correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
All right. I'm gonna do this without revealing names, I know your copy does have some names on there.
Oh, it does.
So I'm gonna try to do that without that. Let me sign this real quick.
You should have a copy.
Maybe you don't want.
Yeah, you should.
Okay, so currently we have an employee out there that has worked seasonal.
Right again.
And you see his salary there and what he makes per week. And he works from April 1st through October 31st, which is 31 weeks. So you see 31 weeks times the salary equals 14,136 dollars. Now, we did, Connie did not take, offer any holidays or if it rains and they do not work. We'd like to see him stay at 29 hours a week or less, so currently he was at 32, we're trying to reduce the hours by at least three a week. And again, it isn't taking effect any holidays or rain.
And currently, right now, beginning of the grass mowing season, he has just been working 29 hours.
Right.
But it could go up to 32 depending if the grass, you know, if it rains a lot and they have to mow a lot or something.
Chris, my copy shows, I'm sure it's just a typo, but on that fourth line, it shows 31 weeks times $456 per hour. shows 31 weeks times $456 per hour.
Oh, that shouldn't say per hour.
Should say per week.
Should say per week.
Woo! I was going to say, I'll take the job.
Yeah.
Larry, you caught, you win.
I'm not, I'm not even doing that, all right.
I've had a lot, I've been having a lot.
I can see you with a big straw hat out there going after it.
Yeah.
Working $436 per hour, you're working pretty good.
All right. So, let's move down, let's, let's move down to the next paragraph. Before I get into that, at the bottom, you'll notice it's written, "No summer help for cemetery." Alvy's requesting no summer help, so no college kids or high school kids or, or whatever you want to call it.
If I may interrupt here. In the past, he has had summer help.
Right.
But come August 1st, they're gone because they're gone back to school. So, he has them for June and July and that's it. So, then, uh, either before they come and after they leave, he only has the one person to help mow.
Right.
And it's gotten to the point where they just need help longer and we don't have that.
During the summer, that's all they do.
So, now moving down to the middle paragraph, um, you notice a new part-time, it's not full-time, so there'll be no perf, there'll be no insurance, there'll be no benefits really. May the 6th, which is like today, um, through September 27th, so it's 26 weeks. Four days a week, 32 hours. You've got a salary there, 26 weeks, $11,232. And again, there was no holidays or inclement weather, rain included in this and she would also, we would also like to see this individual stay, uh, under 29 hours.
And at this time, he has not hired anyone.
Yeah, he has not hired anyone.
He, the person he wa, was inquiring about it or whatever has decided not to take the job, so.
So, it's still open.
Yes, so, you know, might be less weeks.
Right. And the duty, the duties and responsibility of this job is basically mowing and weed eating, groundskeeping.
Groundskeeping.
You know, um, I, I don't see this individual digging graves or anything like, but they could, they could, you know, be part of that, but, um, budgeted for 2024 was $10,000, approximately need, uh, for 2024, $25,368. So, we need to ask for an additional appropriation of $13,000 is what Alvy's requesting to do this. I didn't, we didn't really do the math what a summer employee would have cost us, go out there and do it, or did you?
No, I did not. And see, last year, the summer employees just worked for him.
Every other week.
Every other week.
And how we did that is we had street department employees, one week would work street department, the next week they do cemetery. And then street, then cemetery.
And cemetery, and...
It, it worked and it didn't work because it put us behind on things we need the street department to do. And then as grass grows, 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 it puts the cemetery behind on what they need to do. So, we, we tried it, it didn't work as well as we hoped, but...
I understand the, uh, the part-time and, uh, benefits as far as holiday and vacation and, and all that stuff, but did you say they are not eligible for perf?
Correct.
What's the qualifying criteria for perf?
Full-time?
They have to be full-time.
Has to be full-time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I got hit by that when I was a summer employee back for the city many years ago too.
Well, in...
Got no perf out of it.
For a part-time employee to be fully vested, you'd have to be employed for 10 years.
Uh, yeah, I knew the best, I knew the best.
It would be, I don't want to say it'd be a challenge, but it would be a challenge, especially for summer kids to be 10 years, come back from high school, they might have got work on them.
But it, it's my understanding, and Charlie, you may be able to clarify this. Aren't the, are the county council eligible for perf?
Yes.
Are they full-time?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And should he be eligible for it?
I agree with you.
Well, that's off our, that's off our topic for what we're talking about, so I'm going to stay on this.
Well, just, I mean...
Um, all right. So, back on this cemetery situation, um, I have met with Alvy and, you know, our cemetery is where a lot of our, of our family and our loved ones are buried. So, our residents, you know, our previous residents, I guess, since they ceased, but it's important to keep that up and, and looking respectable and, and nice. And, um, given the fact that he's not taking any summer help, I think it's worth putting him in it because summer employment won't even start until...
May 28th.
May 28th, so in, well, basically June. And they're going to be gone by August and, as you know, August and September and October, grass grows.
Half the months.
November, it can still be mowing in November depending on your weather. He would need help, now though obviously this person's only through October, uh, end of September, well, they'll be there, but...
So, so what do we need or?
We need...
Just like a motion of intent that when I advertise this additional for $13,000, you will approve it next month.
So moved.
Okay. Motion made by Larry, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That was a good one.
It, it makes sense.
Well, the cemetery's a lot of work and, I mean, mowing it on a riding lawnmower's one thing.
Is that it?
The weed eating, no, we got one more thing. The weed eating is the job. I mean, I'd have the weed eater shakes for days if I did that cemetery.
Yeah, I always thought they had more employees. I swear they used to back when Craig Damon was out.
Well, back in the day, the city council members used to go out there and ward, I think it was Ward 3, it was always that one for some reason, that went out and did it.
I think it was Ward 3.
It was only 3. I don't know about the newspaper one.